Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Nicole, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Altman.
Present.
Commissioner Goff.
Present.
Commissioner Mohammed.
Present.
Vice Chair Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Lari.
Here. All right, this time, this is reserved for members of the public to address the planning commission of any items that are not on the agenda and are within subject matter of the jurisdiction of the planning commission. It's recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes. So, opening up public comment, I first have here Yvonne.
Actually, I'm here for the chicken guys.
Oh, okay.
But I can talk to speak to it.
Oh, we'll get to that when we get to apology. Thank you, Yvonne.
Chairman Lari, we do have somebody on Zoom. Oh, she lowered her hand.
Anyone on Zoom, Nicole?
Oh, shoot, okay, hold on. No, nobody's on Zoom at this point.
All right. I will go ahead and close, close public comment. Comish, Director Cooper, do we have any agenda changes tonight?
Thank you, Chairman Lari. We have no changes for the agenda tonight.
Thank you. Going down to the consent calendar, looking to find a recommendation to pass the minutes from our January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three Planning Commission meeting.
If we'll include the joint meeting as well, I will make a motion to approve both.
And I second that motion.
All right, let's go ahead and have a roll call.
Yes, Commissioner Altman.
Aye.
Commissioner Goff.
Aye.
Commissioner Mohammed.
Aye.
Vice Chair Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Lari.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Altman. Let's moving on down to public hearings. First one we got on the schedule is the Chicken Guy Restaurant Conditional Use Permit. And I'll turn it over to William for quick presentation.
Hi, good evening, Chairman Lari, members of the Planning Commission, and members of the public. My name is William with the Planning Division. And yeah, here is a short presentation on the Chicken Guy Restaurant CUP Conditional Use Permit. For the agenda of this presentation, I'll go over the location and then the planning and zoning information, along with the project description. We have some site photos from the applicant. And then I'll go over the site plan and a few of the site-specific issues. And lastly, I'll present staff's recommendation and how the project complies with CEQA. So, to begin, here's a location map of the site. The Chicken Guy Restaurant is a one-acre pad south of the Walgreens. To the west is Highway twenty-nine, and to the north is American Canyon Road. The access, the main access for the Chicken Guy Restaurant is actually Broadway Street, which is to the southeast of the site. And then further to the east, we have the Seven-Eleven Convenience Store, and beyond that, Perry's Pizza. The residences that you see on the southeast, on the lower right of the, of the screen is the mobile home parks there. So, here's the zoning info and project description. The Chicken Guy Restaurant is in the neighborhood commercial CN Zone, and it's a one-acre site. The project consists of a twenty-eight-hundred-and-eighteen-square-foot restaurant with drive-through. It's a single-story building, about twenty feet tall, with a five-foot parapet, so the top of the building is twenty-five feet overall. The applicant has said that the project will include indoor seating for about seventy people, and the site includes twenty-nine parking spaces. Site access is from the south at Broadway Street, and vehicles can actually come in through American Canyon Road if they goes through the Walgreens parking lot. Business hours is scheduled for eight AM in the morning, all the way to midnight on a daily basis. Here's some photos of the site. So, these are photos from the right-of-way. The first one is a view of the site looking northwards from Broadway, that's the top photo. And then the second photo is from the intersection of American Canyon Road going southbound, and you see the site on the left side of the screen. Currently, it's a vacant pad, and there's some landscaping there from the previous, from the development previously. Two more photos, one is from the parking lot at the neighbor's site, and you see the Walgreens to the north. And then another view is from American Canyon Road, looking south. So, here is the site plan of the Chicken Guy Restaurant. The site is a triangular shape, and it's everything within the red dashed lines. It's about one acre. It's, there is parking there already from a previous entitlement. So, a little bit, bit about the history of the site, the, the Walgreens and Seven-Eleven and this site was part of the American Canyon Broadway Center, which was, which had an entitlement in two thousand and eight. And the, and the site for the Chicken Guy was designated to be an El Pollo Loco Quick Serve Restaurant. However, the project in two thousand and eleven only completed the building permits for the Walgreens Pharmacy, and then the Seven-Eleven Convenience Store. So, the pad for a drive-through restaurant is already there, and that's why you see it's quite defined. The, the restaurant itself is shown in blue there. And however, there has not, since two thousand and eleven, there has not been an application for a, has, there hasn't been any applications until August of two thousand and twenty-two. So, here's the site overall. The restaurant is shown in blue, the pad around it includes the drive-through, and then they have shown two entries to the site from Broadway. A little bit about landscaping, the, the site has eight existing landscaping trees already, that's shown in the kind of dark green circles. We have three on the north side, three on the west side, and then two on the southeast corner. The applicant is proposing four additional trees, two evergreen elms and two crepe myrtles, which will be on the northwest corner and the southeast corner. Altogether, the site will include twelve trees and about three thousand nine hundred and ninety-four square feet of landscaping. So, it'll help improve the site. So, here are some building renderings. So, this is how the, the building is proposed. It is, it's got that kind of a modern industrial look, consisting of three colors, yellow, red, and then a, a black trim. The, the black metal canopy and the tower features, there's two tower features on the building, kind of help break up the building's mass. And then through the drive-throughs, they have these angled arches that, that helps bring some color to the, to the site overall. So, that is the building renderings. And then we go, start on to the site-specific issues, and we, I, we have four of them to discuss today. So, the first one is the drive-through lanes. In the original configuration, it has a single lane that splits into two, and then it merges back into one on the east side. And it conflicts because vehicles will, will be driving into that pedestrian path of travel. And one of the things that the, that the review team has added is a condition of approval that will require the applicant to submit improvement plans that can demonstrate a, a revision, a, a safe and convenient way to, pathway for the restaurant drive-through. So, you know, the applicant knows this, and they, you know, there's room on, on this site, and I'm sure that they can find a alternate configuration that can comply with the safety. But that's in the condition of approval. The second issue for the site is utility undergrounding. So, this is something for, that's required for all new development, especially in Broadway District. Policy three dash four requires existing overhead utility poles onsite and along the frontage to be undergrounded. So, the site has a, three utility poles, and the applicant has identified that they're all AT&amp;T. So, it's shown in the, in this map here, under the yellow line, and it's kind of like directly west of the site, and it goes straight down towards Broadway. Got some pictures of, of the three poles, and along with the three poles, it's about three hundred sixty, three hundred seventy linear feet of, of overhead utilities. And that's going to be a condition of approval, and it seems, they haven't said that there, it's, it's a deal breaker for them, so it's, it's, it's in there as a condition. Next, we have public outreach. The staff has conducted several ways of public outreach for the project. In October of last year, we've sent our neighborhood letter to all the property owners within three hundred feet. And when we send those letters out, we also add, we send all the notifications through our Gov Delivery mailing list, as well as add the project to our active projects website. So, that was in October, and we also sent the formal public notice, again, to the property owners within three hundred feet in February of this year, February eighth, and then the agenda was published on February seventeenth. So, each of those instances, it goes through the Gov Delivery list, and the neighbors got notice. And, and they did took notice, notice. Staff received eleven comments for this project, four in favor, and seven were opposed to the project. We also got a letter from the Yochah Dehewinton Nation, who expressed interest in the site, and we added a condition of approval that, that added mitigation measures relating to cultural impact. So, that's it for public outreach. And next, we have entitlement processing. I kind of hinted at this in the beginning of the presentation. So, in November of two thousand and twenty-two, the property owner's attorney sent a letter contending that the Chicken Guy's Conditional Use Permit was not required because of the previous two thousand and eight approval. The city attorney reviewed that letter and responded that the developers' claims did not satisfy what the vested rights, that did not have vested rights for that site, and concluded that the two thousand and eight approval was expired. In February seventeenth, last Friday, the Planning Commission agenda has been published. We did get a correspondence from the property owner, who requested the Planning Commission continue this public hearing for thirty days, so they have more time to review the staff report and conditions of approval. Lastly, is the staff's recommendation for this project. Staff sees no further significant issues with the project, and recommendation is to approve the Chicken Guy project, and the project complies with CEQA as a permitted use under the Broadway District Specific Plan Final EIR. So, that's all that I have for the presentation, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Any public commissioners?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to table this Condition Use Permit Discussion and grant the property owners of Chicken Guy a thirty-day continuation to review the conditions of approval set forth by the City of American Canyon.
Madam Chair, Commission Members, I would recommend you open the public hearing first, see if there's anyone that wants to testify, and then consider the motion.
Thank you. All right, I will open up public comment. First one I have here is Yvonne.
Thank you, good evening. I, I just want to touch on adding another condition of approval. Spurred by the COVID epidemic, we are now seeing a building boom of drive-throughs. Last week, I sat in the Taco Bell across the street here, having dinner from five-thirty to six-fifteen, along with two friends, and we were the only ones inside the restaurant. No one else came into the place the entire time that we were there. There was, however, a line of cars idling engines the entire forty-five minutes, non-stop, and when the rush was over, the cars were gone and the place was empty. Until I started looking into this, I had no idea the damage an idling car does to the quality of our air. I have asthma now. I can't figure out how that happened. When I talked to my doctor, he tells me that the air pollution is the main contributor. The air that we breathe has the potential to kill us. Childhood asthma rates are unprecedented. Not only are we dealing with carbon emissions heating up our environment and changing our weather, we also have particulates entering our bloodstreams and damaging our hearts and lungs. I grew up in Michigan, and every day in winter, we'd go out and idle that car for a good ten minutes to get it warmed up. Well, now I know better, and I don't do it. And that's why I'm here today. Chicken Guys does not have to be a drive-through. We now know that idling cars contribute to air pollution, emit toxins, and contribute to the greenhouse gas crisis we are in today. In order to protect public health and the environment, conserve energy and resources, promote economic efficiency, and improve the quality of life, please consider asking for the redesign of Chicken Guys to be an inside dining room only, and make that a condition of approval. These drive-throughs, there's hotspots for air pollution. Our lives and the lives of our children could have their lives cut short because of the poor quality of the air. Drive-throughs contribute to chronic health problems, and one study has found that people in cars are not safe. Rather than being protected from these emissions inside a vehicle, studies show that the pollutants can accumulate within your car when you sit inside, often to higher levels in the confined space than outside it. Let's consider this seriously. Many cities are banning idling engines and drive-throughs. The City of American Canyon can not only ban future drive-throughs, but it can also limit idling engines to ninety seconds in current drive-throughs. It can also limit idling engines on city streets and a hundred feet of schools and parks. We don't have to pick on Chicken Guys to do what's best for us all. Chicken Guys can open their indoor space and still have a very successful business. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do have several people on Zoom. Lori, I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. I'm also going to switch back to the podium view, because we're having issues. Hold on. Okay, Lori, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Thank you. Good evening, my name's Lori Stelling, and I'm the parent of a Napa teen, and someone who's been involved in climate advocacy since my son was nine, and I began to understand the full extent of the climate emergency for the first time, and its impact on our children. And because of this commitment, I do my best to stay, stay abreast of past and present decisions made by jurisdictions throughout our county on fossil fuel station and drive-through development, with an eye on supporting pathways that help each jurisdiction meet their goal of net-zero climate pollutants by two thousand and thirty. And my family is deeply grateful for the City of American Canyon's decision to put a moratorium on future fossil fuel station development, paving the way for other cities and towns throughout the Bay Area and the US to do the same. And today, it's drive-through development that's on the table, which I'm concerned about, which is why I'm here. I'm concerned that if new drive-throughs continue to be developed, that we adults will be sending the message to our youth that we value convenience today over their chance at a livable future tomorrow. And as a parent, for me, it's, it's not just about the carbon emissions that each new drive-through will invite and produce, it's about the type of lifestyle that drive-throughs encourage, a lifestyle that we must begin to let go of now, if we're going to have a chance at healing this crisis and giving our children hope. It's also of concern to me that if the City of American Canyon, which has a gas station ban, allows new drive-through development, this may actually discourage other jurisdictions from banning future drive-through development that would support them in meeting their goal of net-zero climate pollutants by two thousand and thirty. To me, a ban on future gas stations and a ban on future drive-throughs go hand in hand. So, for all these reasons, I urge you to deny approval of this drive-through application and poss, and consider the possibility of a walk-up, drive-in Chicken Guy Restaurant. We know that encouraging cars to idle is unacceptable practice at this point in the climate crisis, and schools are already creating idle-free zones, and we must choose a pathway forward that encourages a sustainable lifestyle and brings our youth hope. And I really do believe that if every city, town, and county do their part, step by step, we can create the kind of active and engaged hope that must become mainstream for healing this crisis to be possible. Thanks very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Lori.
Next, we have Tammy Wong. Care with me one moment, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm a resident here in American Canyon, and I just wanted to share some of my thoughts with you today about this proposed drive-through development. I'm very proud of our city for being the second city in California to change our zoning to not allow new fossil fuel stations. I'm very proud that we're a progressive, forward-thinking city that cares about future generations and the, and, and their well-being that we're creating with our habits today. Seeing this proposal here today for a drive-through, my comments are, in general, about the drive-through itself, not necessarily against the Chicken Guy franchise and their economic goals. What I would ask is that the Chicken Guy franchise think not just of their own economic future, but to think about the well-being of our community, and to drop the drive-through portion from their plan. As the other speakers said ahead of us, idling cars, that's more fossil fuels, that's poor air quality. And who lives here, who suffers through that? We do, the residents. So, let's not make this a bad exchange, let's just look what we can do from a holistic perspective, and maybe it's the same thing we did when we looked at gas stations. Maybe it's time to look at zoning regarding drive-throughs. I mean, this can be a successful business without a drive-through, it doesn't need to happen. If they want to be a real trendsetter, they should have a drive-through for bicycles. Bicycling is a great way to combat fossil fuel cars. Anyways, thanks for listening to my comments.
Thank you, Tammy.
Okay, next, we have Linda Brown. All right, you should be able to unmute yourself, Linda.
Thank you. I'm a twenty-four-year-old county resident and a professional in the field of sustainability. I've spent a lot of my career working on ways to hone our understanding of the forces that drive climate change, in order to support more informed decision-making at the local, national, and international level. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I would like to urge you to deny the, the application for the proposed drive-through format Chicken Guy Restaurant, as others have said, a non-drive-through format would not be of concern. So, you may be asking yourself, why? What does one more drive-through restaurant in American Canyon have to do with climate change, and what difference will it make? As you've already heard from others, idling emissions from cars waiting in the drive-through line produce greenhouse gases that do hasten climate change. These emissions also include pollutants that impact the air we breathe, a direct hazard to the people who work and live in the area. The cars emit tiny particles that penetrate the lungs, that contribute to rates of asthma, as we heard from Yvonne, and other respiratory diseases. So, yes, it definitely makes a difference. Last year, American Canyon took the bold step of halting construction of new fossil fuel gas stations. It recognized fossil fuels as one of the key drivers of climate change, but the city council didn't stop there. It passed a crucial climate emergency resolution with a goal of reaching net-zero climate pollution by two thousand and thirty. American Canyon was ultimately joined by every other municipality in Napa County, as well as the county itself, in declaring the climate emergency with a clear two thousand and thirty goal. Why two thousand and thirty? The answer is simple. The world's leading climate scientists publish updates on the state of the climate every five or six years. In two thousand and twenty-one, they concluded that climate change is accelerating even faster than previously thought, and that the Earth is now expected to surpass the dangerous one-point-five-degree Celsius threshold that global leaders had hoped to avoid, and that will happen by the early two thousand and thirty's. Make, make no mistake, that is not a threshold we want to cross. We're already hearing about the
Thirty seconds.
Every day in the news. In just the last week, reports about rising sea levels and massive displacement of people rose to the top of the news feed, not to mention storm intensity, loss of biodiversity, wildfires, and more. So, simply put, please lead again tonight, lead by saying no to new drive-throughs, and make this a new condition on their permit. There is also one more thing I need to say. I'm sharing the Zoom with another
Linda.
Make a comment, because she lost her internet, so she came here and asked, asks also to make a public comment.
Nicole.
She, you're being asked to, Ms. Brown has somebody else who would like to make a public comment. We don't have anybody else who's raised their hand, so that's at your discretion, Chairman Lari.
Okay, that is fine. Linda, you can put your guest on the
Hello, I'm the guest, Marilyn Knight Mendelson, longtime Napa resident and co-chair of Napa Climate Now. I would like to support my colleagues and others in discussing why we think it's a bad idea to implement this drive-through lane for the Chicken Guy Restaurant. American Canyon has been making progress on providing a more cohesive, resident-friendly commercial space. This Chicken Guy Restaurant gives you another opportunity to, to prove that. Instead of allowing this just to become another chicken tenders, fast-food restaurant, why don't you ask yourselves, how can this project be altered to benefit the community? As everybody else has said, drive-through restaurants pose a serious environmental and climate hazard, and I won't even go into that, I think the prior speakers have told you that very clearly. I might, though, give a quote from the Department of Energy. Idling for more than ten seconds uses more fuel and produces more emissions that contribute to smog and climate change than stopping and restarting your engine. So, as a result, communities around California and the world are staking out idle-free zones, and already seven US states have regulations about that. And already, seven U.S. states have regulations about that. So now that American Canyon has been declared a climate emergency resolution with the goal of having net zero climate pollution by 2030, it's time to rethink the possibilities. Please ask yourself the following things. Can the Chicken Guy be a successful walk-up dine-in restaurant like Chicken Guy locations in eight other cities? Namely, Atlantic City, Pittsburgh, Gatlinburg, Nashville, Disney Springs, FedEx Field, Santa Clara, and Miami. Yes, it can. Can it provide an outdoor and attractive meeting and eating area?
Thirty seconds.
As a de facto community center like the Starbucks, the one next to Safeway? Yes, it can. Can it offer electric vehicle charging stations to further serve the community? Can it become an earth-friendly eatery by using reusable foodware and compostable and recyclable eating ware? So I ask you these questions, and I believe that the answer to all these questions
Thank you, Marilyn.
And have a Chicken Guy restaurant that can benefit the community. Thank you.
Nicole, do you have any other public comment?
We do not.
All right, I will go ahead and close public comment. Commissioners? I'll start with
We had a motion for us from the vice chair.
No, we have a motion on the table to hold the, uh, Chicken Guy, to continue the Chicken Guy Restaurant conditional use permit conversation to 30 days.
I asked the maker of the motion to amend the resolution to the, um, next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. That would avoid a special meeting.
I will go ahead. You want to?
Yes, so we would like to make a motion to continue this, not only for 30 days, but for the next, um, planning commission meeting to avoid a special meeting.
Well, second.
Roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Altman.
Aye.
Commissioner Goff.
Aye.
Commissioner Mohammed.
Yes.
Vice Chair Cruz.
Yes.
Chairman Lori.
Aye. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, moving on to the next item of business, uh, the Housing Element Annual Progress Report. Welcome back, William.
All right, good evening again, Planning Commission and members of the public. I'm very happy to be here today to give a presentation on the city's Housing Element Annual Progress Report for the year 2022. So some background on the Housing Element Annual Report. Um, this is the fifth cycle Housing Element, which was approved in March of 2015. And the 2022 year is the last year of the fifth cycle. Um, state law requires an annual Housing Element Progress Report. Um, the report highlights work accomplished. And the report is sent to the Housing and Community Development Department and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, which is due on April. So, um, since 2018, the, uh, the state Housing Community Department required, um, local jurisdictions to give a report, not just on building permits issued for the, uh, number of units that they've issued, but also look at entitlements and also certificates of occupancy. So I split this into three charts. The one in pink shows entitlements, which is approved by planning, and, um, building permits, which is approved by, uh, the Building Division. And then certificates of occupancy in green, which means that, uh, the house is received final approval and folks can move in. I do want to say that there was, uh, a one correction, uh, on this, uh, slide that, uh, was not captured in the staff report. There's actually 156 units approved, uh, last year, not 155. Turns out there was an additional ADU that was, uh, issued last year. So I will make that update in, in, uh, before we, we send off the report to the HCD. So last year, 2022, um, entitlements, there were six ADUs that were, uh, approved. Typically, ADUs, once they submit, um, and, uh, they're permitted by right. So, uh, most of the time, uh, we do a review of it and it goes straight to building. For the building permits, uh, um, issued, uh, very interesting year for 2022. 156 units issued. Um, this was mostly by the, um, Napa Cove Apartment Project, which includes 66 affordable units. And then the two subdivisions in Watson Ranch. Uh, Watson Ranch, um, Artisan subdivision, which is lots 14 and 15. Forty-four of their, I think, 98, um, units have been issued. And then the second one, the Harvest subdivision, which is lot 10, another 44 of those units have been issued. So lots of development in Watson Ranch. And lastly, we had two ADUs that were issued as well. And then for the projects that were finished, um, just four. Four, four, uh, ADUs were completed. Um, so, so lots of progress in this last year. I want to go over a little bit of the RENA numbers, which is the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, which is basically the city's assignment that is given by the state. So since 2015, the assignment was to provide 392 units of differing affordability levels, which is shown in the, in the tan column here. Uh, and, um, within the 392, um, the city has to provide 116 very low-income, uh, units, 54 low-income units, and 58 moderate units, and then 164 above moderate. So, um, the city has actually completed and exceeded that assignment, um, by 187%. So, uh, of the 392 units, we've completed, uh, 578 in, uh, 2021, and then we added another 156 last year. So, um, this completes, uh, not only all of the, uh, number of units that were required, but in every category. So happy to give that news. And, um, when we talk about the affordability levels, um, here is the updated 2022 Napa County Area Median Income, which is, uh, provided every year in April by the county. This is for, um, all jurisdictions within Napa County. And the area median income for a household of four in 2022 was $119,400. So, um, it breaks down into categories, you know, 0 to 50%. And a family of four, for instance, um, uh, in the median income, in the, in the low-income category is, uh, $100,750. So these numbers come every year, and, uh, they're steadily increasing. I want to go over a bit of the affordable housing funding. This, uh, this, uh, fee is, is, uh, taken in by, um, commercial and industrial, uh, construction permits. Last year, in 2022, we received $102,302. The year before that was $8,500. Uh, the major projects last year was the PG and E, um, Distribution Center. So that's a, a big, uh, big center, and it's by the square foot. So they, they helped contribute it to last year's affordable housing nexus fees. And then for affordable housing, uh, permit activity, the, the two, uh, big projects we have is the Napa Cove Project on Broadway, which is, um, which, uh, was, had, had their permits issued last year for 66 low and very low-income units. And then the Lemos Point Project that was, uh, issued in 2021, which 186, um, low and very low-income, uh, units. Both of those projects will have affordable units for 55 years. And I think, um, most folks can see the construction going up on, on, uh, the highway for, for both projects. Um, it's the last year of the fifth cycle, and here are some of the program efforts that, uh, that the staff has worked on. For ADUs, um, the city applied for the, what they call the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program Grant, which would, uh, provide up to $704,000 for, to assist qualifying homeowners to construct ADUs. That's coming. And, uh, the next item is that we're also updating our ADU ordinance to comply with new state laws, probably next month or, um, April latest. So there's always updates to the ADU laws. Uh, the Density Bonus Program, we received one big project that, uh, submitted through the State, uh, Density Bonus Program, which is the residences of Napa Junction. They're applying for 453, um, apartment units, um, north of the Reliant, uh, apartment buildings. This is a 15-acre site. And within those 453 will be 46 very low-income units. Um, the density bonus, um, uh, by the state allows them, uh, a few concessions and waivers, and, uh, one of them includes, uh, uh, the, the density change. Um, we've, uh, updated our, um, uh, our partnership with the Napa Housing Authority with another two-year contract, which was completed in 2021. And then, um, we've completed, uh, both the, uh, Lemos Point and Napa Cove, um, Affordable Housing Agreements. So get those online so that they can, um, start, uh, with, with, uh, housing renting. So those are the major efforts of 2022. I always want to, to acknowledge the help that Napa Housing Authority does for us. They, um, they, you know, they help us monitor annual income limits for affordable homes. They, they monitor and administer, and administrate the Section 8 vouchers. And, uh, they also do some outreach for affordable housing themselves. They're also the, the folks that help us with the owner-occupied rehab program and the first, first-time, uh, home buyers program. So, um, yeah, um, Napa Housing Authority, very good to have them, uh, on our side. That's about it for the 2022 update. And this is kind of like some of the developments that are going on for 2023. In entitlements, we're going to see, like, that big project, um, the residences of Napa Junction. There's a big chance that it will come to the Planning Commission, uh, this year in 2023. We have a smaller project, the Sun Square Mixed Use. There are going to be apartments, and that's about 20 single, uh, uh, single-bedroom units, um, near Walmart. We have a new Crawford multifamily project at Crawford and Highway 29. This used to be, uh, the assisted living, uh, project, but they, they have submitted a new, uh, application for 100 units of apartments. And then, um, we also have another Watson Ranch project, which is lot 8, which is 25 more single-family homes north of lot 10. So those are all coming from entitlements. For building permits, these are projects that, uh, the Planning Commission approved, would be the Oat Hill Apartments. They've, they've got their bill, their grading permits, um, submitted. So we anticipate their building permits, uh, in 2023. And also, uh, Canyon Estates, the 35 custom homes, um, north of the high school. The grading is almost done, so most likely we'll see the building permit soon. And then, um, and those, uh, last month, we, um, the Plan Commission approved the, uh, the, the residences at the Hotel of the Ruins. So there's a big chance that those, uh, those, uh, condos will come, uh, in building permits, uh, this year. For those folks that already have their building permits and they're going into construction, we'll see, um, towards, uh, we'll see more work for the Lemos Point Apartments, uh, the Napa Cove Apartments, and then the two subdivisions, uh, Artisan and Harvest. So lots of activity going on for 2023. And of course, the big thing will be, it will be the first year of the sixth cycle. It starts all over again. So some next steps. Uh, this is, uh, the first of three steps, the Planning Commission hearing. You guys will, um, is receiving this report. And then I will give a similar report to the City Council, most likely on the 21st. Then I will button up the, 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 uh, report, and then it will be sent to HCD before April 1st. And that's it.
Thank you, William. All right, I'll open up to Commissioners for any comments. Start with Commissioner Altman. All right.
We're good.
Sounds good. All right.
Receive and file.
And any other comment? All right. Um, I get a recommendation on the floor.
Uh, this is a public hearing. I don't know if there are anyone in the Zoom audience that
We have one person in Zoom.
I will open up public comment. Thank you, Nicole.
Are there any public comments? Nope, no public comment.
Well, thank you. Uh, I will go ahead and close public comment. All right, Commissioners?
Recommend that you receive and file a report.
Do you have a second?
I second that motion. Reception.
Oh, okay. All right, we'll receive and file the 2022 calendar year Housing Element, uh, report. Thank you, William. All right, Director Cooper.
Yes, also, I wanted to thank, uh, William. The, uh, you know, the Housing Element Report is, is like doing income tax. So it's, it's very labor-intensive. I know William does a great job of summarizing, but it's, it's really a lot of work. And we're very appreciative of the, of, uh, the work William does on this every year. So thank you, William.
We're looking forward to the sixth cycle.
So, oh, yeah, even better. Also, thank you, I see Erica Smithy's, our Public Works Director, was here. We appreciate her coming and attending on behalf of the Public Works Department for the Chicken Guy application. So it was nice of her to be here. Always happy to, um, let you know what, uh, work, um, or some of the highlights in the Community Development Department on our active, uh, project list. It's on, begins on page 117 of the Agenda Packet, for anyone that's following along. I don't have as snazzy a presentation as William put together, but I thought I would just sort of briefly go through some of the highlights. The first item on the list is the Crawford Way Multifamily Residential. William mentioned that in his, uh, application. And if you were noticing, he had a panel of three photographs. And the middle one had, uh, is a picture of the Crawford Way Project, their townhomes. Um, and they're, in my opinion, very attractive, uh, proposal. But they would be rented. There wouldn't be subdivided and sold, but it's a rental project. But it's, uh, still a townhome configuration and, um, uh, very attractive.
Asking a quick question on that, is there any, um, comment yet? And it's still obviously very early as to what the, what the build criteria, not the design criteria, will be? Will they be built for as, say, you know, as for-sale level? Or are they being built purely as rental level? Because there is a distinction in terms of soundproofing and various other things that go in on those. And in my opinion, while I understand with the construction defect law issues, it is often, um, common for someone want to issues, it is often common for someone to start on a rental, but if they are building them for sale, usually some point after that ten-year construction defect expiration hits, they may well go ahead and sell them. So I'd love to know if that's part of their plan.
Commissioner Altman, we haven't raised the issue with the applicant. They've indicated their intent is for renting indefinitely, but we can just check and see. I know that oftentimes developers like to have a Plan B.
Yep.
And that would enable it.
Thank you.
So we'll do that. Coming down to item four, we have a pre-application for Paintball Jungle, and staff was out there a little more than a week, about a week ago for a site visit with the, with the operator, and ultimately, they, they require a conditional use permit, and so they're talking to staff just to understand some of the requirements for that. This is a, this is a business that once had a conditional use permit before the property was annexed into the city, but through various reasons it lapsed, and so we're picking the ball up and speaking with them, and, and they will be coming forward with a conditional use permit application. But we're ironing out what the, what the requirements are and, and helping them along to understand the process and requirements.
Good.
Let's see. Item number seven, the Napa Junction Mini Storage Permit. The status you'll see here is applicant placed project on hold. I met with the applicant this afternoon, and so they're getting ready to move forward. The applicant's been a very busy person, so I think they've just been trying to get other things done first and then resume with this one. So this is on the side of Oat Hill. Today, there is an RV storage just on this, next to Hess Road, and this project would replace that, and then higher up on the hill, there are some old industrial buildings that would be replaced with mini storage. So that's what this application is, is all about, and expect we'll be getting plans and moving forward with that. This was another item that will come to the Planning Commission as a design permit.
Can we go back for a moment?
Sure.
Item five?
Yes.
That's a bigger one.
Okay, that, that was probably right around, yes, we provided comments. This is, within the Watson Ranch, there's two ownership interests. The larger portion is AC One, which is headed by Terry McGrath, and then there's the Newell Family that has a smaller portion. This application here addresses all of the land owned by the Newell Family, and it's a resident, single-family residential subdivision, and it's on the eastern side of Watson Ranch between Newell Drive and the Vine Trail, which runs north-south through it. Partway out.
Got it.
To the south, the southern edge of the residential is Rio Del Mar, and then south of Rio Del Mar, which is a triangular parcel, would become a park. And within that park, there is two acres allocated for a city community center.
Oh, cool.
So exciting to finish off that edge there. So you're right, it's a big project, and I know William had a lengthy conversation to clarify our January comments with the applicant, so hopefully we'll be getting a resubmital soon. See, item number sixteen, the Giovinoni Logistics Center, that was discussed by the City Council on Tuesday, and it was continued to its council's next meeting on March twenty-first. There was a surprise letter we received at 5:01 PM from the city of Vallejo. So I know Bill's actively working, we had a meeting on that yesterday to resolve the issues. Let's see, moving forward on major billing and grading permits, we received an application to renovate the ruins structures, which is really exciting. That's the, I'll say, the sizzle of the Watson Ranch project, and it's nice to see that moving forward with applications from AC One. And so the Building Division provided comments within a relatively short time, so we're excitedly working forward on that. On the following page, item ten, the Lemos Point Building Permit, just in communication with the applicant on that, they're expecting leasing to beginning, to begin in August, and so this and other affordable projects are subject to the city's Affordable Housing Preference Policy, which gives preferences to veterans who live and work within American Canyon and Napa County. And in addition, the city works closely with the developer to make sure that these projects are widely informed among agencies that help lower-income people. And so we're in very close contact with them on a marketing plan to ensure that both of those things occur. We'll be gearing up with the Napa Cove on that soon, but all of the affordable housing projects are subject to this.
So does the marketing, these, does that go back to the city to take care of and kind of come up with a plan?
We work closely with them. We have a really good model that was done for Valley View. They had a very, very good response rate from the marketing plan, and so we kind of, we're working on that, and it is, involves having easy access to sign up, to be informed when people are interested. And then we also reach out to many service organizations in American Canyon and Napa County to inform them that we have projects, so they can inform their people, because they're in touch with folks. I'm sure they're looking for, for really good housing that's a reasonable price. And so having that access, I think, is great to be able to get a, a local impact for affordable housing that's available in American Canyon. We also partner, of course, with our city of Napa Housing Authority, and they conducted a lottery system that provides the preference to veterans. And so among folks that, that apply, they'll identify whether they're a veteran, and then they have a greater chance of being selected through this lottery system that the Housing Authority administers. So really looking forward to that, that's coming along. In Watson Ranch, it's labeled what, Lot fourteen, fifteen, but you might know it as Artisan. It was in William's presentation, there are a number of homes that there are close to being closed and having residents move in. And so we're, we're gearing up for that. We expect that should happen in, in March. Let's see. Way down on, on item nineteen, the Circle K Fuel Station across the street from City Hall here, the Certificate of Occupancy for that was issued today, and so, instead of, there you go. So that one's finished. So that's nice. It's always nice to see something finished. Moving forward on major city initiative projects, of course, our sixth-cycle housing element. Thank you again for attending with the City Council on January thirty-first. We received a letter from the State Department of Housing and Community Development on February ten, and I'm pleased to say that we received a thin letter. Most cities get a letter with twelve pages. I did it, I did some, I was curious, I went and looked on it, and ours was only six, six pages.
Is this sort of like college admissions, you know? Is it a thin envelope? Is it a thick envelope?
Right. In this case, the thinner the better. And they did note early in, in the introduction that the city, City's housing element is, you know, substantially compliant with state law, which is very good for them to acknowledge. But they do have areas where there are policy clarifications. We'd like some more proof that you're entitled, projects under construction are, in fact, will get built. I think we can do that. And there are some programs where they're looking for some, a little more robust approach to it. And so we'll be, met with our consultant yesterday, and we're kind of coordinating our efforts and expect to have a response. All right, it's a very high priority for us to get this back in the hands for the state so they can do another review. I think they have about sixty days in which to do that. So we're eager to get that back to them, but it's largely something that doesn't require us to go back and do a whole lot of extra work, which is nice. Sort of in, in sort of a companion to that, further down on accessory dwelling unit ordinance, William mentioned that we need to update it. We actually got a letter from the state, I guess they're doing this all over the state, is they're reviewing every city's ordinance and then providing specific comments. It was actually very helpful. So it's, it's sort of like five or six things, do these things, and then we'll be happy. So it is already on our list to update, but now I have some more specific direction from the state on what they're looking for, which is helpful. So expect to have that.
Mr. Ross?
I'll take a different view. I think it would be helpful, but I also think some of the things that were advanced are subject to an analytical response by the city that integrates it with other planning principles that I think were overlooked by HCD. Especially with reviewed, especially thinking about the content of the fifth and sixth-cycle housing elements. So, anyway, you know, Brent's right, it's informative, education's lifelong process, but I also think that additional review by HCD would be helpful on the ADU ordinance. Otherwise, we would have a conflicting ordinance. For example, we would have policies that approve ADUs while existing housing that might have code problems for utility access and couldn't be habitable. Water and sewer lines would, would not be pursued to make them habitable or preserved. Recall that one of the, one of the critical policies about housing element law going back a long time is, what efforts are you taking to preserve existing housing and affordable housing opportunities? And I'll just say it publicly, when you review the social media for the actual planner that did it, there's some existing things on social media, and I'll just leave it at that, kind of open the door, and you can wonder, okay?
Thank you for your comment.
And then finally, we have a, a big milestone in regional projects, and that would, relating to the Napa Valley Transportation Authority Highway Twenty-Nine PID Study, which is Project Initiation Study. This is a partnership the city has with the Napa Valley Transportation Authority. They are, the, Napa Valley Transportation Authority is the designated agency that, my words, is allowed to talk to Caltrans. And so it's very, very good relationship, and this document is one that Caltrans understands. It's very specific and very engineering. And so there's been a new milestone. Caltrans has approved the document, which is very exciting. The document itself has two alternative intersection configurations for major intersections in Highway Twenty-Nine. The Caltrans approval doesn't decide which alternative is the preferred one. The next step is an environmental review, which is, is a good thing, because as we all know, if you have an environmental review, you can roll on to construction permits. And so NVTA informed us that they'll take one to two years to conduct their environmental review, and then presumably at the end of that process, and maybe this folds into how you decide which alternative is ultimately selected, you've done an environmental review of them both. So perhaps there's, you know, some components of information Caltrans still needs, and the NVTA board still needs to make a decision, but it will all come clear once the environmental review is complete. And so we're looking forward to that. It frees up the opportunity for construction funds to come to the city outside of our own sources to help construct landscaping, sidewalk, undergrounding utilities, intersection improvements, and a host of benefits. So it's, it's great to see some of the milestones move forward. So with that, that's my update on, on the milestones and some of the highlights for the Community Development Department.
Can I hit you with a couple of questions?
Of course.
So I see listed the three different cannabis operations, and they're all on hold. Is anything happening? Is anything likely to happen with those at any time in the foreseeable future? And have we gotten any feedback from the big-time cannabis advocates who were telling us how profitable to the city cannabis was going to be, and we needed to urgently approve all of these things instantly from them, in terms of why none of this has advanced?
Let's see, I have been in communication with, with two of the three, although I, I don't have one-way communication is, is counts. But with Resan, I have been in communication with that applicant. They have some legal disputes with the property owner that's prevented them from moving forward, and up until, spoke with them in early January, and they are still actively working on that. They do intend to move forward, but I guess the legal issues have been difficult to resolve. On the Element Seven, this is a one-way communication. They haven't responded to my inquiries, telephone and email. So I, I would put that in the category of they probably aren't interested any further. The third one, Fumei, is explained, I've been in communication with them. There's been a lot of, of complications in the industry itself, and supply chain issues, health issues with COVID, and a variety of things, you know, that we are all familiar with. They too have been subject to that. They have a partner who will conduct their delivery component, and they are very close to resolving their site plan. I just got a recent resubmital of a new site plan. We have a consultant that does that technical review to ensure that it's, the design is one that meets safety standards. That's very specific to the cannabis industry, and I believe I have a thumbs up from them and an okay to say yes. So that is the one that's closest to being done. The applicant has indicated that they intend to begin with, they have a, in, a manufacturing and a cultivation component to their approval, and that's something that they have explained they intend to do a little later this calendar year.
Thank you.
I think I have one question, and maybe, might not know this or not, but at some point, when do we close any of the, the applications that, you know, have not received any responses or whatnot? Is there a guideline that we go through or...
I know in, in, in some of my prior cities, which was a lot, much larger city than American Canyon, and it's more of a turn and factory kind of thing, it, it really does kind of drag the system if you have applications just hanging on that have kind of gone, have gone dormant. And in that case, the city actually had a policy that if something was quiet for a certain period of time, then we would inform the applicant that we're withdrawing their application. There have been a few times in American Canyon, because we just don't have the volume that larger cities do, where we can kind of sort of hold on to it, it doesn't really harm us in any way. But there is a point at which there's been such a long dormancy that I've sent letters before informing that they, they have a certain deadline to respond, or we'll close the case. And so... I have one here on the list that, that maybe qualifies for that, for sure. The others, you know, we've been in contact, so, you know, we like to give everyone as much chance as they can take.
Thank you. All right, I will go ahead and move along with commissioner items. Do we have any tonight? Commissioner Goff?
Thank you. Actually, I have two different items. First one is really kind of in response to some of the pub, public comments that we heard today on the Chicken Guy project, and that really has to do with kind of aligning some more city policies or regulations around the climate emergency resolution about drive-throughs. I think some very valuable points were made about drive-throughs and idling and what that contributes to some of the climate conditions. and what that contributes to some of the climate conditions that exist in our planet. I would like to see the city take some action on that. Kind of a moratorium similar to what we did with gas stations. I think that would be in line with what we've already got for the climate change emergency. And the other second component of that, I would just love to see a citywide idling policy. There are cities that are doing that now, more and more, that you just can't sit in your car and let it idle. There used to be a lot of pushback from car manufacturers about automobiles and needing to warm up. But all of that is long past now in the new automobiles that are coming out. There's no need to warm up your cars, even in Michigan. Is that where she was from? All of that's kind of gone now, so I would love to see the city do something along those lines to continue our efforts towards the climate emergency. The other one is more in line with just a big thank you to the various city departments for their work that they've been doing at the local high school in regards to both the Citizenship Academy that's been going on through a few of the classes for the seniors specifically at the high school. But tomorrow especially, the departments are doing State of the City for our high school students. And that's just a great outreach to our younger generations and keeping them informed of what our city is, how our city operates. And it's a big thank you to just city staff for that.
Chairman Lowry and Commissioner, I think in light of Commissioner Goff's comments about issues, perhaps that might get brought to the council's attention. One of the, one of the components of the council meeting, very similar to what we do here, and we could institute this, I think it's useful, is the council at the end of the meeting has suggestions on future agenda items. And I think what some of you're mentioning here, I think to give a voice and an opportunity to elevate a conversation about topics of concern to the commission, we could have a section in our meeting much like this where, where there are future agenda items that the commission as a whole would like to bring to a future meeting, then this might be a good time to do that. So I think, I don't, I think if that were something the commission were interested in doing, I don't see any reason why we couldn't start that tonight. If there is something that the commission as a whole would like to have staff agendize at a future meeting, that would be, I think, an opportunity. And that's a way too to give, to voice to the Planning Commission on issues that you're hearing in the community that need to be addressed. And it's just something that, that the council does, and it occurred to me that we should, we should do that too.
I like it.
So maybe after everyone has their certain comments, is that okay if we? Let's allow you to suggest future agenda items.
Do I have any other commissioner items? Commissioner Altman?
I don't know if this is, well, I've got two things. And so one I know is a commissioner item. The other might fall in line, Director Cooper, with what you were referencing. And that's where I'll start, actually. Given the commentary on drive-throughs regarding the Chicken Guy application, and given that we have done a continuance until our next regularly scheduled meeting, is there any way for the Planning Commission and the City Council to meet prior to the next scheduled Planning Commission meeting so that we can be sure we're on the same page? We have run into situations in the past where Planning Commission acted, and then City Council undid what Planning Commission did because we were on different pages. And I think it's, behooves everyone to avoid those situations. So I know you were looking to avoid a special meeting, but I think, given this, if we're looking at only a 30-day or thereabout continuance, the sooner we could get on the same page with City Council, the better off everyone, including the applicant, will be so we can present a unified position. So that was my first one. And then my second one is, as a city who welcomes everyone and is proud of its diversity and whatnot, I'd like to wish all of my fellow Jews out there a Chag Samech Purim for the upcoming Purim holiday, which is, starts in, eh, about, I think it's about 10 days or so from today. And for those that don't know, it commemorates the overthrowing of a Persian dictator a few thousand years back. And that's all I got.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? I don't have any commissioner items except for, I really appreciate that we're getting more involvement. I know it's just our second one, but, for the year, but it's exciting. And I just want to encourage everybody that's out there to continue to listen in, call in, send us your comments, and reach out to Nicole. I really appreciate just the feedback and the open dialogue that we got going on here. So, thank you. All right, with that, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting.